I'd like to call to order the December 7, 2016 meeting of the Pottstown Council. I'm going to ask that you rise for an invocation, actually a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Keep in mind that today is Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Remember and honor the 2,403 U.S. citizens, men and women, who were killed in the Japanese surprise attack on Pearl Harbor, Hawaii on December 7, 1941.
President Wayne, can we please ask Bishop to come up to do the invocation?
Oh, by all means. Oh, Bishop.
Eternal God, our Father, Savior, and Lord of all humanity, come now first of all with gratitude and thanksgiving that we, as your citizens of your love, are able to stand and participate in an activity that you have ordained yourself, for we know all governments have been ordained of you. Now, as we stand in remembrance of those who have sacrificed their lives, we honor them with high respect. We ask that you continue to show your love on their families, those who are in our armed forces, those who are our first responders. We ask now that you will send your wisdom in this room, that we might hear from you and be governed by you. Send your love, that it might become contagious in our community. So we ask all of this, in the name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the subcommittee reports. Counselor Culp, infrastructure?
Yes, we had a short meeting. We discussed the parks and rags and there's some, I guess rumors flying about mini-golf. The mini-golf is doing fine. It's not, it's 20, it's doing 20 percent better than it did last year. And it's not in the red. It's doing okay. And every year it'll get better as it goes. Nothing happened overnight. As far as, uh, L and I, license and inspection, it's pretty much the same. Not too much going on there. It's pretty quiet right now. I guess there's still short people, but things are coming along. And I got to L and I help right now.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything on economic development?
I'll have some comments about the Carousel.
Oh, very good.
And some other issues during my report.
Good. Counselor Culp again, transportation.
No, no.
No meeting. The Ricketts Center won't wait till Monday for Counselor Kirkland. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Heidel.
At our November 12 meeting, the board welcomed several new members. First, Mrs. Susan Lawrence was chosen at our October meeting to replace former school board member Andrew Kiefer, and she was sworn in by District Justice Palladino. Then Justice Palladino presided over the swearing-in of three new student board members, the junior class members of Courtney Parry, Michael Baker, and Austin Andrews. Acting Superintendent Stephen Rodriguez presented an award to 94-year-old Marge Foley, who has been volunteering at the Hoopood Elementary School for 13 years. On Monday, December 5, at the school board reorganization meeting, Mrs. Amy Francis was elected as new board president, and Mr. Emmanuel Wolkerston was elected as our new vice president. Couple notes of interest in the district. On Sunday, November 13, the Pottstown High School marching band performed as part of the Main Street USA Parade at the Walt Disney World Resort in Orlando, Florida. Also, in the month of November, the Pottstown High School students and staff donated 35 units of blood as part of the Miller Keystone Blood Drive. Next regular meeting of the Pottstown School Board is a combined committee of the whole and regular meeting, which will take place on Thursday, December 15, at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, ad hoc zoning, Counselor Prosser.
We are joined by Lisa Mueller to give her opinion on how we should take care of our murals. And we talked about that extensively, and we also went over our assigned ordinances as well.
Very good. Gee, is the animal committee vice president?
We haven't, we did not have a meeting.
All right. Safety, Chief Drumheller.
I would like to report that the camera project is coming along well. I'm hoping that we'll have a report for you for next month. Some of them are being installed. Some of them actually got, we got the first glimpse of them today, so it was kind of interesting and neat. But the project's well on its way. The next thing I want to talk about, too, is that we did a traffic study at Athan Johnson Street. We determined a lot of intersection needs, especially right around the school, but we also determined that a stop sign was not needed, even though you would like one. Unfortunately, it doesn't call for a stop sign because that intersection's going to change with the walk bike school. The next thing, too, I'd like to talk about is, is we're going to have coffee with cops tomorrow, and that'll be at the Montgomery County Community College, main campus, south campus, and we'll be there between 12:30 and 1:30. So if you have an opportunity to, stop on out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I just have a question for Justin to follow up on your stop sign at Athan Johnson. Justin, isn't it in the walk to bike plan that a stop sign is indicated by PennDOT to go in that intersection? A three-way stop?
I believe that's what we looked at the last time when we were discussing that. I mean, I'd have to verify for sure.
So even if law enforcement didn't find a need, it's in there in the PennDOT plan?
Yeah, yes, I believe so. Yeah, three-way.
Thank you.
Okay, how about the mayor's report?
Thank you, President Wayne. I'd just like to mention that the annual Thanksgiving service was held this year at the Salem Methodist Church, which is on West and North Evans. And it was well attended. And I think that it didn't have so much of the publicity, but the solemnity you could feel in that building with those who were in attendance. Last evening, and also on this morning, there were two meetings held by Pottstown Works. Pottstown Works is being steered by the Salvation Army under the direction of the director there, Wendy Egoff, who was here last month to give us a preview of this program, which is so much more than just a workforce development jobs program, but this actually embraces the mindset and the barriers that exist in poverty. And Cincinnati Works is the template, and their co-founder, David Phillips, was here to speak to us on both occasions. And one of the things he kept stressing was just the need for unity among the many groups that are already doing such great work within the nonprofit sector per se. And I'm just excited about the potential that exists between this initiative as well as the trauma-informed community, because poverty in and of itself intersects homelessness, joblessness, mental health concerns, and all of these things were a part of the discussion. And the hope is that with the 20 years ongoing research and mistakes, that as Cincinnati Works shares their experiences, and we have our own mistakes here, that 20 years of a tenure they've had can be reduced for us to 10 years. And what they're finding is, you know, there are some groups that are more challenging to work with to move through this strata, and one of them was foster children that were aging out of the foster care system. They said they were just a difficult and challenging group, never the less on their radar, as well as their work with felons came much after they had begun their process. And one of the things I'd really like to mention, and I mentioned today as a caution to everyone in the room, that the interjection of working with the felons was in response to high crime that was occurring in Cincinnati. And they brought their process to a select group of felons. And after those people were removed from gangs or, you know, pockets of engagement where they had been involved, that this problem disappeared. And what happened next was an unfortunate consequence of politics, where the whole concept wasn't someone's idea, so they tanked the concept, and then the crime went back up again. So I hope that those possibilities for crime reduction that are inherent when poverty is diminished will be realized here, and that it would be a true unified effort across a human interest for a pervasive problem, and that any of those type of things will not have to come into play, where you see a dramatic shift from absent to prevalent once again. And I would like to invite everyone to Friday night's opening of the holiday season, and come on out around 5, 5:30, over where the train comes in at the, at the Manitoni Park, and enjoy the kickoff of the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Now our manager's report.
Thanks, Ms. Wayne. As an update, you may recall at our October meeting, we discussed the concept of land banking, specific to Pottstown. And as we had previously discussed, in order for land banking to work, enable for us, in order for us to be able to divert properties into the land bank, all taxing bodies and the borough authority had to have a buy-in as far as waiving taxes or fees on properties that are identified for the land bank. With that said, I had promised that I'd speak to the authority in the school district, and as I reported last month, the authority was amenable to working with the borough in waiving fees on properties that are identified. I want to let you know that I spoke to the school district's finance committee, and it was, the concept was received positively. And with that in mind, at next month's council meeting, or committee of the whole meeting, we plan on making a presentation on land banking and ask council to consider authorizing the creation of an ordinance in that regard. Also, I want to let you know that we, being the borough and the school district, were scheduled to attend the December 15 county commissioners meeting, where it was expected that they would approve LERTA, their LERTA resolution, as the last piece needed for us here in Pottstown. Unfortunately, I received notice today that the county will not be in a position to consider LERTA at that meeting. They'll be following up with us and probably rescheduling it for some time, and hopefully the near future. On a brighter note, as you're aware, the county commissioners provided the funding needed for the Carousel at Pottstown to make it over their final hurdle, in the hope of being open for business by the end of this year. And I'm happy to report that that's going to happen. Last week, the Carousel had their final inspection from licensing and inspections and received a building occupancy permit, and they are open for business. At your seats, I placed a notice that this coming Sunday, December the 11th, from 2:00 to 2:00 PM till 6:00 PM, they will be opening their doors to the public for the first time and hosting a Christmas at the Carousel event. So take advantage of it. It's pretty impressive. Some of you also may recall that, I believe it was in June, the executive director of PAID, Steve Bamford, sent a letter to Borough Council that is distributed by email indicating that PAID was working to secure a local share account grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority. The purpose of the grant was to fund a feasibility and pre-development activities to support a potential Sunnybrook Hotel project. The proposed project site was within the borough and Lower Pots Grove, right at the borough and Lower Pots Grove jurisdiction and boundaries. I'm happy to report that yesterday, the Commonwealth Financing Authority approved the grant in the amount of $163,425. Obviously, there's a lot of work for the Galati family, the property owners, to do, a lot of research and a lot of assessment to be done, but nonetheless, we're moving forward. The project is moving forward, and it's a pretty positive statement in terms of an economic boom for Pottstown.
Great.
And that's the extent of my report.
Mark, did the county give a reason why they're delaying our LERTA decision on a December 15 meeting?
They did not. I'm trying to find the wording here. The message I got was they will not be in a position to consider LERTA at their December 15 meeting, and they will be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a presentation, civilian service awards.
Before I come up today, I was thinking, what would I talk to you about, the civilian service award? And I want you to understand that often, as counselors and often as police, we constantly say to people, get involved in your community. Do the right thing. Be part of it. And today's award is the antithesis of that. This couple were out in the, in the community. They found a young man that was not breathing and had no pulse, and without asking anything about them, they jumped into action, into CPR, and rescued breathing, and saved his life. We got there and we assisted, but realistically, it was based on them. So tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Rommel and Devana Robinson. Do you want to come up here? And the mayor will step down and shoot, or read the awards.
I'd like to read this commendation from the Pottstown Police Department for Devana and Rommel Robinson. "On October 10, 2016, at approximately 15:52 hours, Pottstown Police was dispatched to a report of an unresponsive subject, a possible overdose. Upon arrival, officers observed two subjects, Rommel Robinson and Devana Robinson, performing CPR on a male subject lying on the ground. Devana was providing breathing support while Rommel was administering chest compressions. Rommel and Devana Robinson were just passing by when they observed the victim in distress and found it necessary to provide medical care to the victim until emergency personnel arrived and were able to take over. This male is alive today as a direct result of the collaboration of lifesaving events initiated by Rommel and Devana Robinson. Your actions bring honor to both of you. We're proud of you, and thank you for doing what every citizen should do in such a situation. And this is on behalf of the Pottstown Police Department and our community, we say thank you."
Okay, next is number seven, security plaza parking agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. I believe Chrissy Ieta is in the room tonight. Chris, if you'd come forward. I received a request from Chris. He's the property owner of the security plaza ability behind us. And rather me read the letter, I'll let you explain it.
How are you? Thank you very much for tonight. Yes, I'm the landlord of Security Plaza, and you probably have seen a lot of construction going on there, but we're very excited about the joint effort with Lower Pots Grove and Upper Pots Grove now, Judge Crop joining, and the court consolidation process. And Mark, you've been really great with, in working with us. And my request, guys, is for, actually, four designated parking spots that will be for police to escort prisoners into the court around the backside of the building. It was a request from the county to have four designated spots for police, so there'd be three in the front of the building. And I have the plans I submitted to, to Mark, and then there'd be one along the side where there's a dumpster located now. So it's for easy transport of prisoners around the back of the building in, in holding cells. There's going to be two holding cells back there, one in the existing court, and actually one in the new court that's going to be there. So I wanted to see if I could possibly get approval from the borough to, I guess the word would be?
To permit the use.
Permit the use of these spots.
So council understands we own, we being the borough, own the road, the driveway, up to the curb of the building. So it would require council to give permission to designate those spots for police parking only and to allow it to happen. The area that Chris is speaking about, as he said, the dumpster is the one, the three spots that run parallel to the building are currently the area that was used as a driveway for the drive-up teller. Doug has looked at it and is comfortable that it won't cause a traffic flow problem. So staff's recommendation is to allow the parking to occur on your property at that spot.
Okay, if no questions, we'll list that for Monday evening's vote.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Number eight, trees, Inc. Want to explain?
You all may recall that Mr. Hilton made a presentation and offered a Borough Council last night to, Tom, do you want to restate your offer so that I don't misstate it? I know, there's a couple things you had covered in here.
Well, this is.
You sent the, in the email, the 40 trees, correct?
Yes, I sent the email, and I presume you forwarded it to everybody?
Yes.
So they all know, know what the offer, up to 40 dead trees and stumps in early 2017. We plant up to 50 trees in the spring of 2017 to fill and, to replace the trees and to fill empty wells where trees were removed. If you wanted to go into the whole thing.
There's a couple questions that were asked, Tom, and I'm going to pose them to you so that, we have it. One of the questions was asked is if a tree originally was one that grows to a height that would interfere with power lines or utility lines that are above, and you're replacing that tree, will you select a tree that will be more, more appropriate for under power lines?
Well, not only is the answer yes, but of all the trees, there's only one that's actually under a power line? Only one dead tree that I'm looking at that's under a power line. All the rest are not.
The next question that was posed, are any of your replacement trees going to be genko trees?
And as I was happy to explain to you, I never, ever planted a genko tree. Those were all Oliver Lewis Christman back in the 1960s. He was a genko tree fan.
Thank you. Those were the questions that council has shared with me.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question. And is this at any cost to the borough?
Pardon me?
Is there a cost to the borough?
No, not.
And do you have 544 spruce on your list, because I did receive a call regarding a tree that's dead? Just, you can check it out later.
No, in my, in my email, I mean, I could spend, you could spend $100,000 on all the dead trees in town. So I'm just looking at the major streets, High, Hanover, Charlotte Beach, and King. If it's not one of those streets, I don't have the resources to do anything.
So can those people cut it down if it's dead?
Well, it's not up to me. That's, they have an ordinance. It's a dead yard.
They can certainly submit the request to the public, fill out the paperwork that public works.
Okay. Thank you.
And begin the process.
Tom, I have a, I have a question. They're all in public right of ways that you're discussing, and you had mentioned that because they're in public right of ways, permission would not be sought, but every, every property owner is going to get a letter stating that this is what you want to do, and if they have any questions, to contact you.
Correct.
At that, at that point, yeah. And so at that point, if the property owner says, and even though it's public right of way, if the property owner says, no, I don't want a tree there, we're not going to plant a tree there, correct?
Based on my experience back when we had the tree commission, I would send letters out and tell them what I was going to do. And once in a while, somebody was very agitated about it, and it wasn't worth getting them upset. So the answer is yeah, if they, they complain.
Any other questions?
Not so much a question, but this is my concern. We, we replace these trees and plant the trees, but what about the, the property owners who can't afford maintenance of the trees that exist around their property as it is? I mean, it's not fair to me. I mean, I get, this is great, but I'm just saying, it's not fair to those property owners who can't afford to, you know, take down the dead tree or replace the tree or maintain the sidewalk, whatever it is. It just, that's my concern.
These are, you're talking about trees within their property?
A tree, anywhere, I mean, here's the thing. It doesn't matter if it's in the public right of way or not. If, if there's something wrong with that tree, they're going to get cited for it from the borough. But they may not be able to afford to maintain that tree or, or take care of whatever the issue is.
Could they come to the borough and ask for direction?
Absolutely.
That they might find assistance somewhere.
From the borough, I would say probably not, but we'd certainly provide them some suggestions.
Okay.
But one of the things, too, Janice, I think that we should continue to explore further into the future, how we are going to fund some of these services for the residents, because, because again, it's, it's going to be an ongoing, it's going to be an ongoing issue, and I certainly don't want to deforest our entire town. I mean, the town is beautiful with the trees. Most of the problem is there hasn't been funding to maintain the trees. So I do think that that's something that we have to continue to explore into the future.
Okay. We'll list this for Monday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Ten is a resolution, police retiree health insurance plan. Number nine, the police, municipal police cooperative agreement.
I think council's aware, since the mid-'90s, we've had an inter-municipal organization known as CMRT. Recently, the chiefs that comprise CMRT got together and decided that it'd be time to reorganize and restructure CMRT, given the number of members that have joined over the years. In addition, I believe, for some funding reasons, the desire is to change the name of the organization to Montgomery County SWAT Western Region. The chiefs decided, rather than continue to amend the existing ordinance and agreements, it would be better to prepare a new inter-ministerial agreement among the members. What is being asked of council is to approve the preparation of an ordinance to essentially sign a new inter-ministerial agreement, to continue or to rename CMRT to the SWAT Western Region for Montgomery County, and then provide for, and make sure, all the member municipalities are part of the arrangement. I don't think there's any change financially, chief, as to what's being proposed. Is that correct?
The only thing is, is the addition of one police department. Roersworth?
Roersworth?
Yes.
Okay. So all municipalities that wish to become part of this SWAT Western Region will be required to take the same action, sign the agreement, which is common to all municipalities, and pass an ordinance to allow their governing bodies to sign the agreement. So that's the action we're asking for, for Monday night, if you're inclined to move forward. And I believe the chief is recommending this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, unless there's some opposition, we'll list that for Monday. Ten is now the resolution, police retiree health insurance plan.
For Monday evening, there's actually going to be two resolutions, as I understand it, and you'll have copies of the resolutions in your packet. These are primarily resolutions to approve new trust documents that are being created with respect to retirement health insurance benefits for our police officers. The IRS requires that these types of funds that are set aside have a, basically a declaration of trust agreement. As part of those requirements, the governing body must actually adopt a resolution to approve those trust documents. We've been setting aside money for years, but this will formalize it in the form of the trust agreements. The reason that I understand there's two, and Janice can correct me if I'm wrong, one of the agreements is act- of the agreements is actually monies that the officers contribute to their retirement benefits, so that's the one trust that will be funded through police contributions. The second trust document would be funds that the borough would provide to ensure the long-term sustainability of these benefits that are being provided. So the resolutions are pretty vanilla. They simply refer to the trust agreements themselves and indicate that Borough Council as the governing body approves these documents. I'm happy to answer any questions, or Janice will can fill in anything that I omitted.
Any questions? Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Eleven is a towing licenses bid award.
The bids went out, as we do every five years, I guess.
Every year. And the two bids that were received were from Sanatoga and from Mance. And they are currently towing for us now. So I believe you have the tabulations that are in front of you, and I'm recommending that you approve that.
We'll put that on for Monday evening. Twelve is grant submission with Upper Pots Grove Township concerning Mervine Street.
Justin. Thank you. Yeah, this is a joint grant application that we would like to pursue with Upper Pots Grove Township, and the resolution is to basically ask for the borough's consent and signify our intent to apply for this, this grant for a repaving between, on Mervine Street, between Hanover Street and Charlotte Street, on both the Upper Pots Grove and the Pottstown side. So it will be split about 50/50. The total value of the project would be about $300,000. There's a 30% match requirement, half of which would be responsibility of the borough and half of the match, which would be responsibility of Upper Pots Grove Township.
And that match is $45,000 each for each township?
Correct. Correct, for each municipality, yep.
And then could you explain to everybody, as you explained to me, because the one thing that I said, it's coming out of, it's coming out of liquid fuel, so it's not affecting the budget. However, I had pointed out that there are some streets within the borough that are in much worse condition that could probably use that funding.
Right, yeah, I mean, there, there may be some streets that are, that are in worse condition. However, eventually, we're going to have to repave Mervine Street, and if we can get free money to do it, that will allow a little more flexibility to focus on some of the streets that may have a higher priority later on. So, you know, it's essentially is a shot at getting free money, so to speak, since our match actually comes from another funding source as well to pave this street. So in the end, we should end up with, with more funds for paving.
So we can understand this, if we did not go with this grant and had to resurface that, we would have, bear the brunt of $150,000 for our half?
Correct.
Got it.
And eventually, it'll, it'll need to be resurfaced. I mean, it's not, it's not in great shape now. It's, it's used a lot. You know, it's not one of our, it's not in the worst shape, but it's definitely not in great shape either. So we think that the time is right to pave it. It's used a lot by the, the school district, and they're, Carol Lewis at Upper Pots Grove hopes to have support from the school district and CMD Transportation, which runs the buses on that street, so it's pretty heavily trafficked.
Right. Okay, we'll list this for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Thirteen, fire services, fire service agreement amendments.
I think council is aware that we have fire service agreements with each of our fire departments to provide fire service. I guess several months ago, council had made some changes to the fire department ordinances. Specifically, there were a number of changes, but primarily, the changes that we're talking about to the agreements relate to the inter-relationship between the fire chief and the fire service committee. Obviously, we've changed the ordinance to vest authority in the fire chief and make the committee more of an advisory or recommending board, which wasn't the case. Looking through the existing fire service agreements, which date back a number of years, the agreements reflect the old arrangement between the committee and the fire chief. And after speaking with the fire chief and the borough manager, we felt that it'd be appropriate to make the modifications to the agreements so they would be consistent with the ordinance. I wouldn't call any of the changes overly significant, but at least they will dovetail and match with our ordinances.
Right.
So that's the, the reason we're asking for your authority to make modification to those agreements. You will certainly see the documents, you'll see the specific changes before they're provided to the companies. But again, I think you'll agree, they're minor in nature, but rather than have inconsistencies between our ordinance and the agreements, it seems to, seems to make sense that everything should line up. So that's the reason we're asking for your approval to change those documents.
Okay, so we're only voting Monday for you to proceed.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll list that. Fourteen, disposition of records and establishing the local schedule.
Yeah, I guess. This is actually a recommendation from our office with respect to retention of certain municipal records. I think council is aware that state law sets forth some parameters and timelines of when records can be destroyed or how long they have to be retained. In the past, council has already taken action to allow the destruction of audio recordings of our meetings, whether they be cassette or electronic, after a certain period of time. However, our schedule does not address the video recordings of the meetings, and so therefore, if there's no schedule, we're required to keep them forever. So the suggestion for this resolution, or at least one part of the resolution, is to permit the destruction of the audio tape after a certain period of time. Again, PC TV may have it, but if it's a record of the borough, either we're keeping it forever or we're going to allow for its destruction. The second part of the resolution really is, in my opinion, oversight under the law. With the advent of email and email being used so frequently, there's actually emails that are used internally that don't meet the definition of public record. Given that they don't meet the definition, there's no authority necessarily that the borough has to delete or eliminate these little emails that are really not significant, but they're there. So it's our suggestion to our municipal clients that as part of the records retention system that you permit the municipality to destroy these emails that aren't public record, and at least you have a record showing that you've authorized those emails to be eliminated or deleted. It's really for your protection, and it's up to council, but if council wishes to move forward, we'll prepare a resolution, and then you can look at it and decide if you want to adopt it.
Okay. And we'll add that for Monday evening. Fifteen, request for proposals, professional service awards.
Council may recall that a couple of months ago, we asked for authorization, we staff asked for authorization to put out RFPs, requests for proposals for solicitor, borough engineer, traffic engineer, and labor attorney. We have since done that, gone through the process of staff review and committee review, and would offer the following suggestions. For solicitor, Wolf Baldwin and Associates, specifically Charles Garner, solicitor. For engineering, Cedarville Engineering Group, engineer contact April Barkese. For engineering firm Traffic Engineer, Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated, Chris Lincoln. And for labor attorney, staff is recommending Eckert Siemens Sharon Malot, our current labor attorney, Ryan Cassidy. Those are our recommendations for Monday night. For, for your information, for the solicitor, we had three proposals. For engineer, we had ten. For traffic engineer, we had five proposals, and for labor attorney, we had four.
Okay. Any questions or discussions of this? Okay, we'll list it for Monday. Sixteen, Tiburon 5K, that's pronounced correctly, for June 3, 2017.
We have a request from Jonathan Ewald, who is the race director. This is part of the Sly Fox Brewery Circle of Progress is the start-finish line. It is originally started, it ran through West Pots Grove, and you may recall, last year, they tailored it down to stay within the borough and found it a lot easier to implement. So their request, again, is to be permitted to run the race on our streets on Saturday, June the 3, 2017, and they will continue to work with the police department in planning and execution.
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll list that. Seventeen is the Iron Horse Show coming back.
This is a request from Fred McClancy of the Gospel Riders, to again, for their sixth annual Iron Horse Show, to close two blocks of High Street on July the 20, or July the 8th, excuse me, 2017, between the hours of 3:00 and 10:00 p.m., with a rain date of July the 15th. As in years past, Hanover Street would remain open to traffic, and it would be obviously subject to review of the police and fire department, which I don't believe is going to be an issue.
Okay, we'll put that in for Monday. Eighteen is PennDOT policy and procedure for consultant and safe routes to school. Justin. Mr. Keller.
So this, this is basically standard PennDOT policy for consultant selection. We just went through this with the Walk-Bike Pottstown project, so we're required, again, to come before council and attest, and have council attest to the fact that we will follow PennDOT policies and procedures for consultant procurement, which means that we would have to publicly advertise it, we would have to have a DBE or a minority goal in, in mind. And we would basically have to follow PennDOT's standard engineering services agreement for the construction inspection on that project. So it should be pretty standard stuff. I think what, you know, the good, the good news that this signifies is that this project is also getting close to being put out to bid, and a, and a construction inspection consultant will need to be selected in the upcoming months, so look for that to come soon.
Very good. Seeing no questions, we'll list that for Monday. Nineteen, recycling data collection agreement. Mr. Keller, again.
All right, so this is a, a, a grant that we look for every year, and we have a consultant, Huff Associates, that typically writes this grant for us, and it's basically money that we get back for the amount of residential and commercial recycling that the borough is producing every year.
Now, that's the masses that go into the blue containers.
Correct, correct. So we've been very successful with that, and we've been getting a lot of money back in grants for, for that effort, I think, you know, approximately $60,000 a year. So what Huff would like to do this year, they were, we were actually already under contract to have them do our recycling data for 2016 and write the grant, but they would actually like to prepare two applications. One would be a joint application with us and several other municipalities, and then another application that would just be for Pottstown Borough individually. And depending on whichever one gets more funding, that's the one that they, that they would take the award from. So the, the fee is, is the same, $8,000 a year fixed fee for the services, nothing changed there. This will just extend our term out to 2018, so 2016 and two more years.
Okay, great.
Just to clarify, you said we get $60,000 a year back from this grant?
Correct, approximately.
Approximately, okay.
Yeah, and that can vary, depending on the amount of recycling we have, and partnering with other municipalities could increase our award too. But we're, we're going to, the way that he has this written, it will be flexible, it will be nimble, so that we can choose whichever route will get us more money.
Okay, so for a change, we get to pick the bitter of two goods.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll put that on for Monday. And twenty is the Sports Enterprises lease agreement for Sunstrom Field.
So the lease agreement with Carl Sunstrom for Sports Enterprises for Sunstrom Field is due to expire on December 31 of this year, and I believe Mr. Garner is working with Michael Lenhart to draft another agreement.
Yes, the current lease, I think, was signed by council in 2005, so it's essentially a 12, 12-year lease or, or the right to renew for that period of time. My recollection is that this lease has been in effect many, many years, much longer than that. Under the lease, the borough leases the property to the Little League, who basically fully maintains the property and makes sure it's in, in good order, and has invested a lot of money in improving the property. So based on Mr. Lenhart's suggestion, we'll be presenting at some point a lease for your consideration. It'll probably be a multi, multi-year lease with the same terms and conditions. The lease was amended, I think, two or three years ago to allow the borough to use the property during the period of the rumble because of the limitation in space up at the park. So the new lease will contain that right to use the Little League field during the rumble event as well. Everything else would stay status quo, and I'm not aware of any issues that have arisen during the last 12 years from either the tenant side or the borough side.
All right. Okay, we'll list that for Monday evening. Twenty-one is Harb. We have four properties, I'm sorry, three properties, 38 King Street, 856 High Street, 1012 East High Street. And if there's no comment, read about that. Bring that up Monday evening. Twenty-two for Harb. These are administratively approved changes. Again, three properties, 1290 East High Street, 80 North Charlotte Street, and 169 North Hanover Street.
On the, on these properties that are replacing windows and stucco with in-kind, what is the in-kind?
Do not know, but I'll have the answer for you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll list those as well. We have some year-end items to take care of. A is to adopt the 2017 proposed budget. Go ahead.
Currently, I'm passing out the, you'll see a sheet called the Balanced Budget Master. As you'll recall, you advertised a budget for $52,646, 500, 646,579, which equates to a 10.660 mil or a 3.49% tax increase. Or on assessment value of property assessed at $45,000, it represented an increase of $29.65 for the year. That budget proposal, you will recall, represented deferring the filling of new positions in Public Works in the police department, deferring the filling of a position in licensing inspection, not making a $250,000 contribution to the OPEB fund, and not moving funds to the Capital Reserve Fund as per our capital reserves policy. Council does have the right to waive the moving of those funds in any year that can't be done or shouldn't be done. Shortly after the budget was advertised, in our efforts to refine the proposed budget, we were able to move some fees that we paid to Norfolk-Sutherland Railroad out of our general fund into the parking fund for the Redding parking lot behind us. Additionally, by fine-tuning the part budget, or part revenues to the general fund, we were able to adjust the required millage at 10.435, which equates to a 1.24% tax increase. Or again, if you talk on the property assessed at $85,000, it represents an increase of $10.51 for the year. That is the budget that was advertised, although it's at a lower amount than you did advertise. With that said, I know that council has made it quite clear that the preference is to approve a budget for 2017 with no tax increase. Jenny, if you would, please. So to that end, I'm passing out the 2017 revenues and expense sheet and a tax statement sheet that reflects a balanced budget at the same millage as 2016 at a rate of 10.311 mils. This budget represents, in addition to the changes already mentioned, a further reduction in staffing by the elimination of an administrative position in human resources, and by deferring the filling of a police officer vacancy that exists in the police department at this time, or will exist in the police department with the retirement of an officer that's scheduled, I believe, for March, April of next year. If it's truly your desire to pass a no-tax increase, I strongly caution council, and we've told you this before, that we're on precarious grounds. Costs continue to rise as we continue to, continue to provide services to the public. By not passing the tax increase, the gap between available funds will continue to grow, and by not bridging that gap, we are going to slow down the process of building reserves that we may need to sustain the budget in future years. So I just ask you to consider that as you deliberate over the potential. So, I just ask you to consider that as you deliberate over the potential budget.
So, after the finance meeting that we had this evening, we have a third option, because I don't think, personally, I don't think and don't feel, and I do not want to delay the hiring of another police officer. Police services is something that our community desperately needs. However, the administrative position could still be eliminated, and it would take you down to a 10.427, $8.86 on an $85,000 assessed property. We have three options on the table.
Okay.
Entirely up to council.
So, our options Monday will be to go with the suggested budget with an increase of 1.24%, the latest budget, which is probably, what, 1.2 or 1.18%, or the 0% increase. And Monday evening, someone will make a motion. All right, we'll list that.
I do just also want to add that going into 2017, we can't be finished with this, because again, there are services that the community needs probably more than others. One of the things we talked about is trees and sidewalks, so we need to continue exploring other ways that we can fund the services that the citizens of the borough need and cut costs at the same time.
Absolutely.
And the administrative position in the police department is also crucial.
I assure you, Councilor Miller, that that is a day-to-day task that we engage in every day that we're here and when we're not.
My only caution I would put out from business experience is that people are the number-one assets of any operation. So, maybe we want to cut back on salt or grit for the roads or the caddem, but once you start cutting people, jobs don't get done, and that's a long-term problem. All right, that was A. B, we'll be adopting an ordinance to fix the tax rate for 2017, and that's pending the outcome of-
Correct.
-the vote on A. C, there will be an amendment to the fee resolution.
Sure. The council, at this time every year, based upon recommendation from staff, looks at the fees and determines what should be adjusted. Based upon information that we received from the administration and staff, it appears that the fees that we'll be changing will be fees associated with the municipal airport, specifically the rental amounts for new hangars, older hangars and tie-downs. Park and Rec is suggesting some changes to their fees with respect to facility rental and things of that nature, and that's rather elaborate in the current fee resolution. And the last section of changes relate to the bulk disposal cost for the borough authority, and so you'll have the resolution in your packet for review for Monday evening, but again, these are just annual changes based upon operating costs. So, if there's any questions, I would suggest that those can be answered Monday night if anybody has them.
Very good. And D is, will be the 2017 council meeting schedule. It's in your packet now. If there's a concern about the dates, you know, let us know. Twenty-four is a waiver of fees policy. As economic conditions have gotten worse and worse, the borough has had to look every possible place to save money, bring in revenue, and reduce expenses, and in discussion with other council members, it is suggested that we give the borough manager the authority to not waive any fees for the year 2017 and forward. There will be one exception. It was done by council a number of years ago, and that would be the Memorial Day. That will remain something that the borough will handle, but all the other activities that require fees for the use of our property or service or personnel, we just can't afford to waive them anymore. Twenty-five, we have vacant positions for January appointments. A is a construction code board of appeals, B, one Harb vacancy, C, Human Relations Commission. There are still three vacant terms, and D is the Pottstown Borough Authority, one term expires on January 1st of 17. E is PDA, three terms expire, F is the vacancy board, one, and G, zoning hearing board, one term expires.
So, you have a couple of applications.
We have one application for the Human Relations Commission, Robert Watson.
Okay.
We have a request for reappointment to the Borough Authority from Jeff Chumnock, and we have a request for reappointment to the zoning hearing board from Mark Patrizi.
Very good.
I just want to address this one, the reappointment from Jeff Chumnock, who in his letter states, "Having served the last five years with the current board, I feel we work well together for the ratepayers and would like to continue moving the authority forward in the future." Well, let me tell you how the Borough Authority works with the ratepayers. I've owned my home for 27 years. I have paid my bills on time, every time they're due, every three months that they're due. I don't mind admitting that I am a now-always struggling homeowner in the borough of Pottstown. So, when my bill became due last Friday, and I couldn't pay it until this Friday, when I get paid, because you can't be paid until I get paid, there was a $30 late fee tacked on. Understandable, it's terrible to be poor, because you have to pay late fees and it makes you even poorer, but that's fine, I understood that, and so intending to come in on Friday with my paycheck to pay the water bill with the $30 late fee. In the interim, I get another notice today that says, "If you don't pay it in 10 days, we're going to shut off your water, we're going to charge you a $50 shut-off fee, another 10% penalty, and you can't pay by personal check, you have to bring in cash and a credit card." If that is how we are working with the homeowners of the borough of Pottstown, then I reject this appointment.
Okay. Any other comments?
Agreed.
Okay. So, we'll move on those Monday evening. We're now at-
Point of clarification, all of those will expire the end of the year, so they would be January meeting appointments. This is all just-
Oh, they won't be?
Yeah, they're all for January.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're all for January, so there's no action for Monday.
No action Monday.
You can't reappoint until the actual expiration of the term.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at 26 comments from citizens present.
Sheila Dugan.
Just going to stand here. Couple of things, one, I want to let everybody know that we are settled in our new office space. Today, I was painting the front, so 238 in the New York Plaza is now the PDA offices. We're getting settled, it's looking good, bright and cheery, very happy with the move. And second, as the mayor had mentioned, on Friday, we welcome Santa in, starting at the Culbroke Dale Railroad, bringing him into town. All day Saturday, the businesses are participating in a whole lot of events, starting at 8:30 in the morning, running until nighttime, and on Sunday, we have our historic house tours and a holiday brunch that many restaurants are coming to 107, at 107, to join in on the brunch, so it should be a fun time for that as well. So, anyone that needs tickets can go online at downtownpottstown.org, or call me at 610-323-5400, and we will get you tickets. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Marlene Armato.
Marlene Armato for Park Court. I have some concerns about the proposed bike lane on North Roland Street. Not painted bike lanes per se, but with what I think are the proposed posts that are going to be part of the project. One of my concerns is fire equipment, making the turn from Beach Street onto Roland Avenue, avoiding the posts plus cars parked on the opposite side. So, navigating that is a concern, whether or not they're going to be able to do that. Another concern is the width in some parts of Roland Avenue with the 10-foot bike lane, cars parked on the other side, and two cars abreast going in opposite directions. So, I'm sure a traffic study was done, I'm just not sure that all that is going to fit in some areas of that street. Another concern, and this seems odd, but on trash and recycling days, I don't know how close the posts are going to come to where the driveways are of the houses, and so if the trash receptacles have to go on the outside of the posts, that's going to be another navigation issue with cars going both ways, the trash receptacles, it's going to make navigation difficult, so I just wasn't sure what the plan was for that. Maintenance of the posts themselves. I would think that they're going to get weathered, that they're going to get scraped, that they're going to get dented. I understand that this is funding from a grant, but is it a perpetual grant, or will money at some point run out, and then the borough will be responsible for maintaining these posts? Within the bike lanes, maintenance within them, as far as branches and other debris that the bikes are going to have to avoid, who's responsible for maintaining inside the bike lanes? Is it the homeowner, is it the borough? Just something that needs to be considered. Also, for these people to sell their homes. If you have two comparable homes that a home buyer's looking at, and they look at a house that has posts in front of it, I would think that the home buyer isn't going to want to buy a house that has posts in front of it. And my ultimate concern is that members of Borough Council voting to put something in front of someone else's house that you would not want in front of your own house. So, those are just some concerns I have, if you would consider them. I thank the members for their time and work in the service on Borough Council, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, consider your issues.
Ron Williams.
Ron.
Good evening. Can start out with this. I have a pair of reading glasses in each room in my house, including the restrooms. I have one pair of reading glasses in the basement and up in the attic, hanging from a little, I have three pair of reading glasses in my car. Come on, let me finish. Gee, thanks, Mark.
And he doesn't have a pair tonight.
Okay. Well, today, I'd like to announce that Art Fusion 19464, in partnership with the Montgomery County Community College and the Hill School Hobarts Run Project, will be presenting the first annual Pottstown Festival of the Arts on July 3 and 4, 2017, at Pottstown Memorial Park. The holiday events for the Independence Day celebrations will actually begin on Saturday, July 1st, with a region-wide flea market in which all residents, nonprofit, community, and church organizations will be invited to participate for a minimum fee of $5 a site. On Sunday, July 2nd, Mr. Howard Brown from the Pottstown Health and Wellness Foundation will be organizing a sports Olympic eyeball tournament. Then on Monday, July 3rd, we will kick off our Festival of the Arts to continue through July 4th. Events will include arts and craft vendors will display their works in two distinct venues, juried and non-juried. Student artists will be offered vendor sites at no cost. Music entertainment, which will include local artists and groups, will be presented at our centrally-located performance platform. Artist demonstrations, which will include pottery-making, flute-making, and a number of other offerings. Esels will be provided for a community arts project, probably a mosaic, which we hope to donate to the Mosaic Community Land Trust. A food court headed up by Ed Wysock and Sheila Dugan will be set up at the entrance of the park, bringing you a taste of Pottstown. Ed and Sheila will be arranging to have local eateries participate in the makeup of this food court, and it may include some participants from our high school and college culinary programs. Pottstown's PDA's farm will be joining in on the events as well, and we are looking forward to working with Sheila on this project. I asked Sheila, I don't know every farm, F-A-R-M.
Farm and Art of the Regional Art.
That's what I meant, yeah, that's what I said. Arrangements have been made to bring the Tons of Fun Shows Carnival to town on those two days, too. They'll be located along the creekside in the parks. In addition to these events, we are looking forward to presenting the region's first laser light fireworks display. This display is a rain-or-shine event and will be provided with all the depth, glitter, and excitement you would experience in a regular fireworks show, but without fire. I invite anybody interested in helping with the planning of this celebration to contact Erica Hornberg at Art Fusion or myself. Erica's phone number at Art Fusion is 610-326-2506. I am at 327-1838, and you're welcome to call either one of us. We are excited to be presenting this festival to the Pottstown community. As we look down the road to the joint efforts of the organization of our local restaurants, the Carousel, the Culbroke Dale Railroad, the contributions of the Potts Grove Manor, and the Pottstown Gateway supporting our own Manatonic Green Miniature Golf Course, my hope is that events such as this and the attractions that are becoming our signature will become one of the contributing parts of the regrowth of a new vision for Pottstown and its neighbors. I am also here to invite anyone who might be interested, and I would encourage all of you to do this, to join us tomorrow night at 107 High Street, where Art Fusion 19464 will be working to support a fundraising function to go toward the 2017 Independence Day Parade. Thank you. And by the way, we've paid our fees already.
Great. Thank you.
Put all the glasses back.
This is how one loses their glasses.
He wanted an extra pair to bring to meetings.
They'll always be here.
And we are down to councilors' general discussion. Mr. Arms.
I just want to, first, I appreciate the efforts of John and Mark coming up with the alternative budget scenarios that were discussed tonight, it was really appreciated. I know I'm going to catch a lot of grief for this. Cheryl, prepare yourself. In terms of police service, I don't believe that delaying the hiring of one police officer is going to have a drastic impact on the reduction in crime in this borough, to be honest with you. I'm just going to leave it at that for now. And regarding the offer of trees, I was not on council when this happened, but council did vote to eliminate the shade tree commission for a good reason. I have a resident on one of the numbered streets who contacted me about this tree offer, and, you know, she made it known that she was promised the maintenance would be taken care of, you know, the trees that were planted would not uplift the sidewalk, so on and so forth, and that is not the case. So, I think by accepting this offer, we're setting ourselves up for some real issues in the future.
Councilor Miller.
One of the things I want to ask for council support on is directing our staff, our licensing inspection department, our police department, and our fire departments to begin working together and come up with a comprehensive plan on how to deal with the properties that are causing quality-of-life issues in our neighborhoods. I get, on minimum, three calls a week from Second Street, criminal, deviant, antisocial behaviors, property maintenance issues. When I go down there, I feel like I'm walking in another dimension. There is aborted up property with big orange signs on it saying, "For rent, Section 8, okay." There's vacant properties, there's a burned-out property. There are so many property maintenance issues down there that it would take me weeks individually to go down and notify, get them all to the LNI department. So, I'm going to ask the borough to begin on East Second Street and systematically work through the rest of the borough and start dealing with these problems that are causing neighborhood quality-of-life issues. Now, I can't speak for all the fire companies, but I did speak to the Phillies Fire Company, and they are more than happy, willing, and on board to work together to get this done. And I would like to see a comprehensive plan, and I'd like to see it within 30 days, because it has been three years under my tenure, and things are not getting better. Things are getting worse.
Okay. Councilor Cole.
I was fortunate to be at the Carousel on Saturday. It's really amazing, the work that these people have done, and there weren't very many of them that did it. They did a fantastic job. This Sunday, they're going to have photos with Santa from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. I would encourage anyone to come, bring your kids down and see it. It's quite a work of art, and all the horses have been painted by volunteers, and they're quite beautiful. So I would appreciate if everyone would come out to the Carousel and also on Saturday for Santa's arrival and the different things that are going on in the borough.
Thank you. Councilor Prashen.
Yeah, I was going to say that, too. Really looking forward to it. You know, I volunteer just a very miniscule amount of time compared to, like, I mean, I hope everybody realizes what a huge project that was, and we need to get it going. So I'll go to that, or hopefully early on, and hopefully enough time to check out the holiday tour after that.
Great. Thank you. And I can't top any of that.
Well, I'd like to say something. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
I know you're not sorry, but it's okay. I'm big up here.
I'd just like to say regarding the issues concerning the budget and as it is, that we could possibly have a tie situation based on the numbers. But I'm quite sure that council will work through the best possible scenario, considering, too, that the common stock of the people also includes the taxpayer that does pay the bill. So we can't really leverage the employed from those who are there, are employed by through the taxation process. It's a very challenging year in that we've been presented with the possibility of having to hire staff. And I've spoken to Manager Flanders about the possibility of speaking to the state, possibly deferring to 2018, the hiring of a manager for stormwater, stormwater management. And secondarily to that, the cost of setting up an authority, if that's the way that it would go, would also be an additional expense. So for the borough to keep the line as tight as possible, whether it's zero or one, is really a kind of a mute point in an 11% county tax increase. I don't know if there's been any changes on their side. So we can't do anything about that increase. Another possibility is with sewer and water, it's a different pool of decisions that are made that could cause an increase. So whether you get a tax increase here or zero here, you've got the county affect, and you also have any possibilities that could come up with increases from water and sewer. So at best, it's always going to be a shell game. But I do thank the efforts of Janice Lee and Mark Flanders for whittling things down and reorganizing things within their capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I repeat, I can't top any of that. So, sir, this is--
I wanted to get on and say something before I move forward. And I want to say something before this waiver of fees and policies that I won't get fined for coming up after comments from the gallery. I wanted to say that I was once told, "You're pretty poor frog if you don't praise your own pardon." And I'm in a vicarious position. But last month, we had an issue in town with all of the internet raving and all of social media during the last election. We had, many of you are aware of the fact, that we had an individual from Boyer Town who wanted to have a rally in the borough. And in so doing, that was supposed to have been an anti-Trump rally, and after which the young lady received death threats. She received information from the Klan on her Facebook page, and they had also posted that Pottstown was a town of hate, and they were inciting other Klan members to come here and bring their arms. I'm standing on behalf of our police department, because they did not have a reactive moment, but they were proactive. And they won't say it, but I will say it, that our chief, myself, and others in the community, we gathered even the day before. They did a great job in correlating other police departments in the event that they were short of manpower. This activity took place in Smith Plaza. It was a beautiful event, even the day of. The chief and myself, we went to the Pottstown Ministerium, asked for spiritual help in that. So we had the ministers praying, and the night of the event, we had Pottstown fineness out. We didn't have to call on any other police department, but we had ministers that were in the crowd. We had members of the NAACP that was in the crowd. And it was all coordinated by our police department. And I don't think that in lieu of the violence and the anger that is permeating throughout this United States, that we cannot allow a day go by without appreciating who we do have. And we have the best in Pottstown. And for those of you who thought maybe it was nothing, but it was something for a lot of residents in this community, because we refused to allow the Klan or any other hate group come to this community and dictate to us their ideology. So we all took a stand. You might have read about it in the paper. But if you were not there, I want you to know that our police department did an excellent And as lieu, as, you know, we were talking about whether we need to fill positions, yes we do, because each office account, I go up and down Montgomery County and talk to other police chiefs and others, and they're coordinating efforts in our community. So I just wanted to stand and praise our own pardon, because it needed to be done. And many times, you think nothing is working, but men and women in blue are working hard in our community. I'm not just saying that because I'm the chaplain, but I'm also a community activist. I'm the liaison between the police and the community. And I just wanted to take this opportunity and not allow the evening to end without you understanding and appreciating what we have in Pottstown. And you slept well, because everybody was in place, and the activity was diverted. No Klan showed up. There's only one nut that came through at the end with a Confederate flag, and he blew his horn. But other than that, it turned into a love fest, and everybody was singing "Kumbaya." People were hugging. It was the millennial group, and everybody was showing love. So everything was turned around. So as you slept, things were peaceful in town. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I certainly can't top that. I need to announce that we will be going into executive session, and we will not be returning. Meeting adjourned. Just for purposes of announcing its collective bargaining and personnel.